Okay, we will begin this meeting with the pledge of allegiance. If you'd all please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown? Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan? Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Still here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Okay. Are there -- oh, we need to approve the minutes of the previous meeting of June 20th, 2016.
I'm for approval.
Okay, motion by Dennis Roberts. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Eric Jacobson. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That motion carries. Are there any additions to the agenda? Don't see any. Okay. Petitions and communications. The police chief would like to talk. Pat Connolly, chief of police for Urbana.
Good evening. By now, I'm sure all of you have heard about the event that developed on the morning of July 4th, 2016. Two press releases from our department have gone out, and today at 12:15, the state's attorney's office also sent out a release. I recognize that this is a very controversial issue, and I wanted to provide you all with an update on the case because I know that a number of you, I certainly know that I have been receiving numerous emails and phone calls from folks expressing their opinion about this event. Just to recap, this situation began around 7:00 AM yesterday morning. Urbana police and MedCad began receiving numerous telephone calls requesting that we address Facebook photographs of a person burning an American flag. We were quickly inundated with requests to address the issue, and as this evolved, we began to receive numerous indications that people were outraged, which included threats of retaliation against the person responsible for the photographs and the statement that accompanied them. When officers learned that the employer of the poster had begun to receive threats, they responded to the poster's place of employment. When officers learned that the poster was at the employer's place of business at the time that the officers responded. Officers, now concerned about the growing tension and for the welfare of the innocent people who may have been present at a large retail employer, they met with the person posting the images. They attempted to de-escalate the situation by asking that he voluntarily remove the public posts, but the poster refused. Trying to balance the First Amendment right of free speech with public safety and recognizing the number of outraged individuals were growing, the officers researched the Illinois compiled statute, 720 ILCS 5/491, flag desecration, and determined that this 2013 statute was currently in effect. Under Illinois' flag desecration statute, public mutilation of a flag is a Class IV felony. Officers conducted further investigation, and when they confirmed that the poster was responsible for desecrating the flag, they placed him under arrest. The state's attorney was consulted, and after consultation with that office, the poster was released on a notice to appear and was later transported home. He was in custody for approximately five hours before being released. The leadership team, the deputy chief, division commanders, and I reviewed the information available to us at the time, and we have already taken preliminary steps to prevent this from recurring in the future. I believe that the officers acted in good faith as they tried to balance the safety of the public with the rights afforded by the constitutional law in a rapidly evolving and unpredictable situation. That said, we understand and respect the state's attorney's decision to drop the charges against the individual. Illinois' flag desecration statute went into effect over two decades after the U.S. Supreme Court ruling in Texas v. Johnson. The state's attorney and I will be working with local legislators to ask them to consider reviewing the flag desecration statute, and we have already implemented a strategy to review constitutional law and the office protocol associated with it. I would expect that you have a lot of questions. I understand that, and I want to do my best to answer them all. However, this event happened less than 36 hours ago, and I want to ensure that a thorough review is done before I provide you with information that might be speculative. We're going to go through as many dispatch calls, phone messages, emails, and posts as we can. Additionally, as I indicated, I would like the opportunity to speak with our local representatives about their view of the statute before I comment further on the question of its constitutionality. Finally, because we live in this age of instant shared social media in which emotionally charged situations can escalate and evolve rapidly, it's only going to be a matter of time before our officers are going to face this kind of charged situation again. I want to make sure that we conduct a thorough analysis of this protocol before I commit to anything else.
Okay, thank you. Dennis?
And what activity or action was taken against those individuals who actually threatened violence to this individual or the workplace that they attend?
And that's what we're currently working on now. As I said, we're compiling all that information, trying to identify the source of those threats, and we're still moving forward.
Do you think that there'll be any activity or action taken when that's determined?
I don't want to speculate on that. I just don't know at this point.
Eric?
But I want to pursue that just a little bit farther. Have you discussed with the state's attorney whether or not the people who issued threats did something that -- for which they could be charged?
Again, we're in the process of reviewing all of those, and each one of them is independent in each one of them based on the content of the statements vary the situation differently, so I won't be able to address that at this point.
Aaron?
So, given the -- what was described as the growing tension in safety of the bystanders, then those comments had enough in them for you guys to think that there was some merit or some concern about the safety of other people around, though, right?
Yes, sir.
And so, those were threats, right?
There were threats, that's correct.
But, to your knowledge, there was no action taken about the people making the threats? Only the person expressing the First Amendment rights was arrested?
Right. Well, as I said, we're still in the process of trying to identify whether or not we can even identify who sent those.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I must congratulate the Urbana Police Department on arresting a suspect in the shooting of a witness in a court case, which caused that case to be suspended, I guess. I don't know what the exact title of the action is, but anyway, I think we do have an excellent police department, and they do try to de-escalate things. Okay. I have one card, and that is from Bishop King and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, and they do not wish to speak, but they are still concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Is there anyone else who would like to address the Urbana City Council? Well, I have something I mentioned. I went to the U.S. Conference of Mayors last week, and I was very impressed with two cities that got awards. One of them is Anaheim, California, and they did a city of kindness, and they sent me the -- I think these are little coasters, but they say "City of Kindness," and then it gives you the email to go to, to explore the hub of resources for the kind movement. So I think there's a real effort going on in a number of cities that we all have to take a more active role in creating a positive environment for people. And what they did in Anaheim is they had schoolchildren pick -- I think it was -- they were going to do a million acts of kindness, and these are all documented, and they actually got it achieved. So, it's something that I think that we should look into and see if Urbana would like to put on something similar. I think it's a good idea. We have so much meanness going on that we might as well try to counteract it with some kindness. So, anybody else want to say anything? Dennis?
Thank you for sharing that about the acts of kindness. And we also have instituted something, I think, that deserves national attention, and that is the Day of Gratitude. And we've celebrated our first annual one recently, and I think that potentially that would be just as useful as a city of kindness, which is something that perhaps we created and is homegrown. I think we should be proud of it, and I hope we see that coming not only as a state level -- state of kindness or state of gratitude, but perhaps nationally as well.
Okay, thank you. Unfinished business? I don't think we have any that we're going to deal with. So, reports of standing committees, the committee of the whole? Charlie?
First up is Resolution Number 2016-641R, a resolution to approve an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement Tiger VI grant Champagne-Urbana multimodal corridor enhancement, amendment number two to the intergovernmental agreement for the MCOR project. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
Okay, next up is Resolution 2016-642R, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement, the JAG grant, City of Urbana, City of Champagne, and Champagne County. For the committee of the whole, I move approval.
Second. Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Marlin. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay, that motion carries.
Next up is Ordinance 2016-649, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2016-17, the JAG grant. For the committee, I so move.
Do you want a second?
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Ms. Marlin?
I'd like to move to send this to a special council meeting next Monday, July 11th.
I'll second the motion to move that.
Okay, to defer it?
Defer to a second.
Defer it, okay. All right, there are two council members that wish to defer it, so...
Well, actually, no, point of order, they're moving to a specific date, so it's a separate motion. It would not fall under our deferral rule. Deferral rule was literally a move to defer, and it moves to the -- automatically to the next city council meeting. So if this is going to a special meeting, that's a separate item entirely.
Well, would the next city council meeting, if it's a special meeting, qualify? Or how do you want to do this?
If it goes to the next city council meeting, there's no need to have a special city council meeting for that.
Well, the timing is such that if it's going to be acted on, it needs to be acted on by the 11th, so that's the reason.
Then it needs to be a specific motion to that date. It can't -- it's not the deferral rule.
Okay. All right, we'll have a motion.
We need to vote -- we'll need to vote on it.
Okay. You have a question. Aaron?
Is there -- I don't know the -- I don't guess Roberts rules in a situation like that. Is there a discussion about such an item, or to ask why it was being moved, instead of just voting on it now?
We have several members that -- we have two people that are missing, so that's the reason to move it.
So we're going to move everything?
No, just something that requires a supermajority. Okay, so, we can vote on this revised motion first, then?
Yeah, what is on the floor now?
The motion on the floor is to move this to a special council meeting next week.
Okay.
And that takes a vote. It's not -- doesn't fall into...
Okay, so, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, it'll go to the meeting on Monday. Okay, Charlie?
Okay, item D, ordinance number 2016-650, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section 343, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for Lucky's Lounge LLC doing business Lucky's Lounge, 202 North Lincoln Avenue. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion?
Yep.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah. So, I'd just like to comment that I've really received verbal support in my community on the street, walking. People appreciate the fact that we are trying to limit the number of G2 licenses that are being allowed to be distributed in the community. And the two that recently we didn't support were based upon the location within the community and the fact that they were adjacent to residential areas, rather sensitive residential areas in the case of the Lyman neighborhood. At this point, because the location of this particular application, and because it reuses a building that's been abandoned for a couple of years, I'm not going to protest it, but I would like to say that, at least in my ward, people have -- want us to be very thoughtful about the additional G2 licenses that are allowed in this community and consider the effect that they have on the residential areas.
Diane?
Well, when we passed our -- I basically support what Dennis has observed, but when we passed our zoning ordinance for the gaming parlor licenses, we wrote it so that each one could be considered in the context of the neighborhood, and that's exactly what we're doing here. So this is located up near the hotels, near the interstate. It's not embedded in a residential neighborhood, and as Dennis said, it reuses a building that's been deteriorating for more than a couple of years, like several years. So this will improve the appearance of the entrance to the city, and I think -- and it's located in a commercial area. And I also wanted to note that the address is 2002 North Lincoln Avenue, not 202, as stated there.
Yes, 202 would be a different story.
That would be a different story altogether.
I think it was right last week, though, right? In the... Okay. All right, so do we have a motion on that? Oh, you made the motion, and who seconded it?
Committee of the whole. I might have.
Yeah, I think maybe you did. I just didn't write it down. Okay. Right. So, this is for Lucky's Lounge at 2002 North Lincoln Avenue, and it's a motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts? Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next up is Ordinance 2016-651, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section 343, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Max Convenience Stores LLC doing business at Circle K at -- there's two numbers listed here. At 2011 North Lincoln Avenue?
Right.
For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Any questions on this one?
Just one.
Yes.
Since there are two addresses, we want to make sure we want to strike one of the addresses as being inaccurate.
Okay, I got my stuff from last week.
It's the number of the store.
Circle K number 1301.
It's Circle K number 1301, and the address is 2011 North Lincoln Avenue.
Okay, yeah, there's a typo in the agenda item, so that I make that correction.
Okay. It's correct on today's, it's 2011.
Yeah, that's the -- yeah.
And the name of the store, or the number of the store, is the 1301. K.
Circle K number 1301.
Circle K, yeah, okay. All right, so, we have...
I just read what's put in front of me here.
Don't think, Charlie, just do it.
2011, okay.
You can be killed by detail.
All right, we have a -- go ahead. We have a motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Any other comments or corrections? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Okay, hopefully the backside won't have any more typos. Ordinance number 2016-653, an ordinance approving an amendment to redevelopment agreement buy-in between the City of Urbana-Champaign County, Illinois, and 129 North Race LLC in connection with the redevelopment project area number two. For the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Next up is Resolution 2016-643R, a resolution approving a home developer agreement between the Urbana Home Consortium and Highland Green LLC. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. Any discussion? Mr. Ammons?
Yeah, I just wanted to publicly say that I really appreciate the interaction and the information that Kelly has shared with me about this. I've learned quite a bit over the past few days about Section Three and about the federal guidelines in relationship to minority women and veteran-owned businesses, and so I'll be learning a lot more, but I'll be sort of digging deeper into finding out exactly how we're collecting data and information. Kelly's going to share some stuff with me, but it was an eye-opening experience to get that information, so I just wanted to publicly say thank you, Kelly.
Charlie?
Yes, and I'm actually thankful that we're finally at the point of pulling the trigger on this project and look forward to the groundbreaking. It's been, what, 10 years in the making, at least, if not longer, so...
And I did look at our ordinances, and they go back quite a ways on equal opportunity employment, decades in Urbana.
It'd be nice to have some specific goals around that, though.
Okay, we have a motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries. Charlie?
I think we probably should take a roll call on these two.
You want a roll call?
Yeah, I think it'd be better to do that.
All right, there's a call for a roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
We are committing funds on that, so... Next up is Resolution Number 2016-645R, a resolution assigning and amending an Urbana Home Consortium tenant-based rental assistance program agreement. Was community elements, and now it's rosecrans, thank you. TBRA for fiscal year 2012-2013. On behalf of the committee, I so move.
Second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries.
And last item is Resolution 2016-646R, a resolution approving modification to the City of Urbana Home Consortium fiscal year 2013-14 and fiscal year 1415 annual action plans. This is related to Highland Green. For the committee, I so move.
I'll second.
Motion by Smythe, seconded by Roberts, I believe. Any discussion? Would the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Ammons?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Marlin?
Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Smythe?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Charlie. Reports of special committees. Reports of officers. Do we have any officers that would like to make a report? Guess not. Okay, new business. We have appointments to boards and commissions. First Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Cara Dudik. Public Arts Commission, Jessica Snyder. And then reappointments, Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Susan Jones.
Do item one and then item two here.
Okay, all right. Let's do item one, then. Is there a motion on the appointments there? Those two?
Move approval?
Second.
Okay, motion by Smythe, seconded by Jacobson.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Oh, is Cara Dudik, is that to replace Brandon?
I think so.
Okay, thank you.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And back to reports of officers. I actually do have a report. I talked with the minister of the Methodist Church about the chimes, and I'm still waiting to find out how long they were playing when they were kind of out of order and playing too much, more than what the church had wanted. I don't have that number, but he told me that they are scheduled to play for 10 minutes twice a day, first of all, from 12:15 to 12:25, and then from 4:30 to 4:40, Monday through Friday. They don't play them at all on Saturday, and then on Sunday, they play them once from 11:45 to 11:55. So, I took just the five days where they're playing twice, 20 minutes, and just said, in the time period between 7:00 AM and 11:00 PM, which is 16 hours, that represents 2% of the time. So, that is not a lot, and I think we might be able to resolve this if, you know, we find out what was actually causing the problem when it was -- when they were playing them for too long, more than what they had planned. And I went over to -- I talked with the minister on -- his name is Steve Anderson. I talked with him on Thursday, and on Friday, I went over and listened to the chimes at 4:30. You couldn't even hear them from the city building. The traffic going by on Vine Street was too loud, even though we don't have very much traffic at this time of year. So I walked all the way over to the end of Lincoln Square near the church, and I saw Brandon Bowersox, and I asked him if he was unhappy with the chimes, and he thought they were lovely, and it was part of a downtown. So, anyway, that's my report for now. So I think we can probably resolve it. Anybody have any comments on what they'd like to see? Diane?
Just a question. Did the problem arise when they started playing, is it four or five times a day?
Yeah, that's when the problem started, because he said they -- and I could -- I want to get the history, too, of when they used to play them, but there was a miss -- a malfunction, a Caroline malfunction, where they were just playing too much, and so people got upset by it and came and talked to the city council, but I think we might be able to resolve this. Anyone else? Yes, Dennis?
Well, I do appreciate the fact that you're striving to have a conversation with Minister Anderson and have a resolution in a friendly manner rather than, you know, what could become like city council litigation, so... So thank you so much. I hope we can resolve that.
Okay. Anyone else have an opinion on Carolines? Eric?
I don't know if we're in a specially favorable place, but we do hear them. We heard them Sunday morning, and Naomi sometimes hears them when she's working out, you know, in our yard. And, but of course, we're farther away. I mean, we're way up by, almost to Lincoln Avenue up Main Street, but...
You don't have any big traffic streets. Well, you have Race Street, that's not as big as Vine, so...
Yeah, so, but anyway, I -- they don't bother us, but so this isn't a complaint, this is just a data point.
Okay. All right. Okay, let's get back to new business. Repointments, item two, reappointments to boards and commissions. Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Commission, Susan Zone -- Susan Jones. Boneyard Creek Commission, Clark Bullard. Community Development Commission, Chris Diana. Historic Preservation, Gina Paluso and Matt Metcalf. MOR Development Review Board, Jonah Weiskopf. Plan Commission, Lou Hopkins. Sustainability Advisory Commission, Steve Wald and Todd Rusk. And the Tree Commission, Michael Stevenson. Motion by Smythe?
Second.
Seconded by Ammons. Any discussion? All those in favor? Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I hate to -- I wish that we could have had a private conversation, but I'll just say that I really disagreed with Mr. Weiskopf on the -- on the issue of the House just to the, you know, the -- that was on Elm Street.
Oh, okay.
That we had a big deal about, and so if we had had a private conversation, I would have urged you to think a little bit more about appointing him. have urged you to think a little bit more about appointing him.
Oh, okay. Well, we send these out in advance, so if you want to take a look at them, give me a call in the future, that would be fine.
And I apologize, I, I know that we, I had this for a few days, but...
Okay. All right, anyone else? Is there a motion? So moved? Okay, a motion by... Okay, all right, sorry about that. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'd like to abstain.
Okay. So, that motion carries, and if there's no further business, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.